Any comments? Please go to the microphone and give your name and address. Hearing none. Madam Mayor, it would appear that the public hearing has had a conclusion.
This time I call to order the April 14th, 2014 Latrobe City Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic where its stand on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I ask that we have a moment of silence to ask for guidance, give thanks, or to quietly relax. I think we're done. Roll call, Ms. Buck.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Caldwell-Kreisner?
Here.
Mr. Sepora? Mr. Boelmeri?
Present.
Ms. Beese?
Here.
Mayor Wolf.
Here.
The sixth president.
At this time, I'd ask for the approval of the minutes from the March 10th, 2014 meeting.
I move the minutes of the March 10th, 2014 meeting to be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection through any means.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the fiscal department reports and bills paid for the months of March 2014?
Need a motion?
May I have a motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Questions on the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we ask that citizens come up to the microphone if they have to discuss anything related to the agenda items. Please state your name and your address. Thank you.
You have on the agenda tonight pertaining to hiring another police officer. After the recent tragedy we've had in a neighbor school of history, when it was proposed last month, I left here, I was against it. When I discussed it with my wife, she disagreed with me.
That's a first.
Can you bring her with you to the meetings? I'm gonna need her.
We live in a crazy society today. And I blame parents that are involved today. You're not gonna solve it in school, you're gonna solve it at home. When I went to grade school, I had nuns that protected me and nobody fooled with them. When I went to high school, there were enforcers that bounced people off of lockers. We didn't have any problem. Today, you have this cyber information pulling cyberharrows. You have students, especially girls, that are destroyed on this internet. It has to be up to the parents to control some of this. But when it comes to the safety of students in schools, what are you gonna do with one safety officer? You have five schools. You gonna pick a morning that he's gonna be at that particular school? Shoot an incident occur. How long's it gonna take for him to get there? It's out of your realm. Instead, I got $60,000. You know as well as I know, that won't cover the salary. Once that officer comes in, he's union, all the benefits, salary, you need at least $80,000. Well, let's get another car, add to the parking lot. Who's gonna maintain that car? You are spending too much money. You've been, council has been spending too much money. Basically, you had a financial advisor as such and said you were gonna hit the wall in 2015 for half a million dollars. Unfortunately, we had a devastating ice storm that filled the coffers from the transfer station. That bought you a couple more years. If you didn't relate that incident to your own personal budget and brought in a financial advisor, one of the first things they'd tell you is your eyes are bigger than your wallet. You better have a fairy godmother that's gonna give you a credit card without any spending on it or so on. As for security for the school, that's the school board's fault. They could spend $10 million on an athletic complex without blinking an eye. It's gonna cost a half a million dollars probably, at least, to adequately secure their schools. You aren't gonna do it with one officer, believe me. Unfortunately, I seen on television, and I've read the paper and everything pertaining to this tragedy, on Ben Travel. You had a safety officer in the building, in the hall. Now, the police talked to one son, that's standard procedure, call for backup. I'm looking for professional enforcers, professional bodyguards if you wanna call it, whatever. Somebody that's going to act immediately. If an incident occurs, there's no way that 19, 20 people should have been cut or stabbed. The gentleman's calling for backup, that's fine. That incident should have been corrected within a minute, as far as I was concerned. You need somebody that's professionally trained and with a background to bring these kinda situations under control immediately. And that's up to a school board, get these people, and they're gonna cost you money. But you need more than one security guard if you're gonna get any kinda security in your school systems today. In this case here, you're probably gonna need four. Those people can be used for basketball games, football games. Every now and again, I see there for riot in a football game or a basketball game. There's places for them to go. And I said, hiring one police officer wastes your money and you're done, and you're adding more money for the taxpayers of the city to pay.
Thank you, Mr. Bulb. Is there something else? Is that it?
Yeah. I think, what I read in the paper, some people in council should sit down with some officials from Unity Township, over a cup of coffee, even park and see what the...
I couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Jamie Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. I wholeheartedly agree with most of the items that the previous speaker has spoken to. You know what concerns me is, he corrected the school's responsibility on safety, okay? Our chief of police has negotiated a contract that nobody knows what's in the contract. We don't even know what a new police officer's gonna cost us, hourly wages, fringe benefits, and everything else. But we're willing to absorb some of that cost. Now, even though the police officer is going to be able to work when he's not at school, he's gonna work 180 days of school. And the hourly rate with benefits is probably at least $25 an hour, and you're talking $36,000 right there. Okay, now, I don't know what a police officer makes, but I know they're probably underpaid but making pretty good money, okay? And I think it's up to the school district to cover all costs. I think they should cover the retirement benefits and everything. I don't think, if he's gonna earn money up there, the city of Latrobe should not have to pay into his retirement fund and the cost of that. I know that our mayor and Mr. Graziano went to Harrisburg this past, I believe it was this past week or last week regarding the municipal pensions. They're concerned about this. I think the citizens of Latrobe are concerned about this. And I think that if we're gonna do something like this, in addition to talking to Unity Township, which I wholeheartedly agree, that this is done in the open. It should be on the Latrobe website. The police contract, I think, should be on the website also, so people know exactly what is involved in this. When you're talking about a police officer possibly working eight hours at the high school, and then maybe somebody calls off and he comes down here and we have to call him, now you're talking time and a half. Their contract, we're talking about a contract, a municipal contract, and I think even though you're talking $60,000, I don't think that that's gonna cover the cost of this here. I'm really concerned about that. Possibly, you could tell us what a new officer makes per hour, you know, and also what are the costs per hour of benefits? We should know these figures. And I'm sure that somebody on council knows these figures. So possibly, you should let the city of Latrobe, the homeowners and the other residents know what it's costing them. I don't know if Unity Township, I know there was a squabble before, and when they talked about the, when we talked a year or so ago about doing St. Vincent's College, covering them, okay? And all of a sudden, that went quiet, okay? Everybody quit talking about that because evidently there was a problem. And in the paper, you see the Unity Township school officer, they're talking about a problem again possibly. You know, I just think that we're getting into a situation where the city of Latrobe needs to sit down and figure out if we wanna be a regional police force, which may be the right idea, okay? Or we wanna cover the city of Latrobe and have the school district possibly have security personnel possibly, or even, you know, the metal detectors in that area. You know, there's not very much that one officer can do. There was, there were three officers down there at Franklin, I believe it was Franklin down in Murrageville. But I think there was two unarmed, and there was an armed officer there also. And the one officer was stabbed, and then who controlled the situation after that? A school teacher and a student. At Latrobe High School, you have a senior high school, you have a junior high school. You have several doors, you have about four doors entrances to the senior high school, and you've got about three to the junior high school. Now, I think that the way to go is probably possibly security cameras and also, and they may have them, and also metal detectors. I, you know, I don't think the way it is, in Pittsburgh, probably schools have the metal detectors, okay? So possibly, you could answer some questions on what the salary wise, what our new people make, and what it's gonna cost this city over the entire year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Mr. Miller, if you want to find out those salaries, you can go to Alex's office and request that, Red Rose.
Absolutely. It's available with the right to that law, but I'm sure Alex would be willing to share that with you. You may know off the top of your head, Alex. I think you have it there, but...
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly...
I have a general idea, but I don't know specifics, so I'm gonna pull it without it in front of you.
If we were to hire a police officer, the base salary would be $21.79 an hour. If you figure conservatively, and when I say conservatively, for the city's protection and the taxpayers' purse, that's a high rate, the benefits rate is about .43. So basically, you multiply the $21.79 times .43, and that gives you an hourly benefits rate. As you've talked about, there's impacts to the MMO, which is the minimum municipal obligation. Those really wouldn't take effect till 2015. And then there's overhead, and of course, overhead includes vehicle expenses, supplies, space, IT, cellphone, ammunition, training, dues, membership, personnel costs, uniform, Kevlar vests, and so forth. So, you know, that gives you an idea of overhead. So, you know, you can kinda work your way across. It is, you know, more than the $180,000. However, we...
Oh, the three, when you say $180,000, you mean the three-year grant?
Exactly. The three-year contribution from the Greater Latrobe School District would equate to $180,000. But again, we're getting more of the officer's time than just, you know, them only doing work up there. They'll be able to supplement during the non-school hours as well. And we have tried to limit the impact of the city by fundraising. As you know, this city's very generous, and the K-9 officer has been entirely paid for by the generosity of the businesses and individuals of this city to the tune of, I don't know, maybe $80,000 we may have raised, or $110,000, $120,000? In fact, if you look at that SUV vehicle out there, that was not paid for by taxpayers' resources. And the point is, we're trying to raise money for this position and supply those soft and hard costs so that the city, you know, has really, is able to do the same thing we're able to do with the K-9 officer. So, we're looking at that now, and we're working with entities like the Greater Latrobe Partners in Education, whose mission is to fund and supplement the educational efforts, you know, for the district, and looking specifically for the vehicle costs and some of the other hard costs. And as you can imagine, unfortunately, last week has led to some people's interest. Just like when the dog was fatally wounded in Pittsburgh, it led to a lot of people wanting to donate to the dog. We've gotten people interested, or people are interested in wanting to donate to school safety. And that's just the reality of an unfortunate situation. So, again, we're aware of those things, and it's my job to try to find funding for those, and we're working at it. And I appreciate, you know, the interest in certainly a complicated situation.
And I'd like to add, if I may. I wholeheartedly support the security resource officer, and I think that there's somewhat of a misconception as to what his role is, his or her role will be. And I think later on, this evening, Chief Boomer will explain that. But there's a lot of prevention involved in some of the responsibilities that he has so that situations don't escalate to this level. I think that the burden to the city is, you know, we recognize that we're probably not gonna be able to cover the full cost of it, but we're gonna find other ways to do it so that it doesn't overburden the taxpayers. And, you know, we had these same arguments when we wanted the drug dog. We had the same concerns from people when we wanted to get Rocky. And we haven't seen any increase to the taxpayers as a result of the dog because of the kindness and generosity and support of so many residents and people in the community. I was a supporter of this before, you know, the tragedy occurred. I think it's necessary. I think, you know, is one gonna be enough for five schools? You know, probably not, but you gotta start somewhere, and I think this is a good place to start. So, are there any other citizens' requests, comments relative to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I've been a school crossing guard for the past 15 years out here. In minor things we had, Jim gives us a radio. Alls we have to do is call them within a minute, two minutes, depends where they're at. They're right there, and sometimes two guards. So, I mean, they are really good. I mean, if we call them, they get there fast.
Yeah, we're fortunate that, you know, LES is in the school district, is in the city of Latrobe, and we get terrific response time from the local police. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Finance Committee? Madeline?
We don't have any. Sorry. Nothing to report at this time.
Public Safety Committee? Jerry or Julie?
Last week, we had a meeting that was open to the public for the...
Neighborhood Watch.
Neighborhood Watch program. And the turnout was excellent. We were really pleased. Seems like there are a sufficient number of people interested in getting it started. I thought it was a good starting point. Not enough people there to actually begin the work, but we set up another meeting. Do you remember the date?
Yep. May 19th at 6:30 here. Anybody interested? Kinda get it moving?
Yeah, so our hope is that those that were there on the 7th will help to spread the word, and that'll double by the May 19th, and we can keep the momentum going. And I think there were representatives there from each of the regions, if I remember correctly. And so, I think it's a really good start. I think it'll be a good program.
Thank you.
I'd like to call everybody's attention to the citizen drug complaint form. I don't know if everybody knows about them, but we have complaint forms over there that... If you see something going on and you know it's drug-related or you have a suspicion, there's spaces you can fill out, what's going on, what you see. You don't have, you can sign it if you want, but if you don't, you don't have to. Drop it off down here at City Hall, or, you know, you wanna call me, I'll come and pick it up, whatever. But I think it's important that the citizens know about this, so we can, you know, it's a start. I gave some to a couple businesses. I don't know if anybody has gotten them from there or not, so...
We have an online form as well for them to fill out, because the police officers when it's filled out.
I think it's a really good idea. I'd like to see some people use it, because I hear people saying about it, but, you know, they don't wanna get involved, so hopefully the Neighborhood Watch will help a little bit of that, too.
And how many people do you feel that you need to get this thing off the ground?
There are six regions, right? Yep. Yep, okay. And ideally, at least three in each region. More than that, really, but that would be a good starting point.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Public Works Committee, Jerry and Madeline?
We toured the transfer station, got a good look at how it works, and we got a couple people, Steve Zelenko and Harry Albert, have expressed interest in joining our committee, so hopefully in the near future, we'll be finding ways to market the transfer station to bring in a little bit of money to pay for all our bills that we're spending.
Do you have anything to add, Madeline?
Well, the only thing I have to add is that I think the residents should really go out and take a look at what we have out there. I don't think a lot of people understand what all is out there. And I think everybody should take an opportunity, I'm not saying flood in on them, but give them a call, say you'd like to go through the transfer station. The first time I went through there, I could not even believe what I was seeing. That's how great of an operation it is out there. True. That's about it.
Thank you. And the Community Development Committee? Julie, Teresa Fabian? Who wants to?
We did have a little meeting and just bring new ideas, nothing concrete yet, but anybody that wishes to participate in that, there's a signup sheet where you buy garbage bags.
I think I have that. I think there's a couple names on it. I gotta get it to you.
So, we're open to anybody, any ideas?
Is the plan for, or maybe you haven't decided yet, to try to schedule like a monthly meeting once we get this off the ground at the same time, and then if there's nothing going on, you can cancel it? I do know I talked to Ann, and one of the things that I think the Community Development Committee needs to start working with her on is some ordinance issues. I had presented to her a couple complaints that I had from residents about things, trash in the yards, and it seems that, you know, the process that we have now is she sends them a letter and they clean it up, and then it gets messy again, and then she sends them letters, they clean it up, and it's, you know, and there's no teeth in it. Whereas if maybe she had a third, you know, like, three stripes, you're fined, or something. If I have to send you three letters, even if you clean it up in between, the third letter, you're getting a fine, kinda thing. And so, those are some of the things that I think that would be good for your committee to look at.
I think we talked about the third Monday?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
All right, so next week would be the third Monday, and we're gonna meet here?
The green room was.
In the green room. We'll meet in the green room.
So maybe once we get these kinda finalized, we can maybe put something out on the city website, letting people know when the dates are.
Mayor? Yes? If they could let me know when interviews in the room, so I make sure nobody else is in there.
Yeah, 'cause that room gets used a lot. It really does. You can use this room if there's no yoga, or something else going on. Okay, any Board and Authority reports? Anybody have anything, I don't see anyone here from LMA or Department reports? Joe?
The 2014 proposed paving budget is not complete yet. That part of it being the actual streets that we plan on doing. But I do have some information on the funding pertaining to that project this year. The county was cut once again, so they're not providing any funding for paving projects for this year. I originally had proposed to have three streets done in the first ward area and was accepted by them, but federal cuts ended up finding their way to the Community Development block grant, and then unfortunately passed on to us. So, there'll be no support from CDBG money this year. On a good note, liquid fuels this year has increased to $209,384. Every year, for quite a few years now, Latrobe gauges their paving program on what we receive in liquid fuels. The amount this year is up $26,384 from last year. It's gonna continue going up through 2017, and then we don't know where the program is going to go after that. But for the next couple of years, there's gonna be an increase in liquid fuels. So, like I said, we're gonna have approximately $26,000 more to spend this year than we did last year. The code enforcement officer, Anne Powell and I, we've been working with the gas company. Some of you are aware, there's been a lot of work going on for the last two months out on Grant Street. That's right alongside Aroma Italiana. After about two months of piecing it together, they've decided to replace the whole line, which from there to Anderson Street, the road has been dug up. We have worked with the gas company, and we're gonna be sharing a cost, so that's one street that's gonna be getting done. We'll be able to pave that street for probably less than half than it would normally cost us. And those people out there will be rewarded for what all they've been putting up with since last December. And the road needed, incidentally, the road needed paved before the gas work was being done. So that's when they also help our paving program. One other thing, the transfer station recycling. We're having a lot of unhappy people up there lately. Just to give you a background on what's happening, the beginning of the year, we went to single stream, we started taking in more recycling. Started taking in newspaper, magazines, chipboard, which added to the volume coming in. Approximately three weeks ago, the Lowell Hannah Watershed put receiving recyclables. They were taking them, they were going all down to an area in Scottdale, which is closed right now. So, all the people from that area, Ligonier and the surrounding area that we're using that facility are now coming to the Latrobe transfer station, and we're having a rough time. Currently, all the recycling in this area right now is... Currently, all the recycling in this area right now is going to Pittsburgh. Our contracted hauler, who's our, the same as our garbage hauler, is having a rough time keeping up with the amount of volume that, uh, we're taking in. So I just wanted to kinda, hope I can get some support from the, the news media and getting that word out to people. Uh, what's happening is they load their vehicle up with, you know, their recycle items and they might drive the whole way, you know, from Ligonier here to only find, we're not accepting it today because we're full. And I understand their frustration, but we have no control over that. It is part of our contract that the haulers, who has our garbage, take care of that. And currently, they're up against it. Everybody in this area is. That's one problem with recycling. Thank you.
We're still taking the cardboard, right, Joe?
Yes. We're still taking it as we have room. Yeah, and, and if you've been up there, it'll get full and overflow. Again, as Joe's mentioned, there's basically a domino effect in the supply, in the supply chain of providers. There is an entity down in Conneville who's closed down, who's taking all of these recyclables. And there's really only one entity, and that's Waste Management Facility down in Neville Island, that's taking really all of western Pennsylvania. And so they, it's creating a bottleneck within the market. So as those things get worked out, it affects Lowell Hannah, so they have to close theirs down and more people are trying to find us. And the problem, we have to, have to keep it open. You know, as part of our permit to operate a transfer station, we must offer recycling. And so we're trying to work with our hauler to get more frequent drips out of there and have a box ready and available, but unfortunately, it isn't as easy as just saying, you know, do it when they really have no place to take it either. And it's kinda getting bottlenecked within the system.
Chief LeMaur?
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, and council. Tonight a very important...
Get a little closer to the microphone, 'cause I can't hear you.
This place is falling apart tonight.
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, and council. Tonight, a very important proposal will be in front of you. You will be voting on an agreement with the Greater Latrobe School District to place a Latrobe police officer in the district as a school resource officer. The officer will be of service to the five schools in the district. First of all, I'd like to thank the school district for approaching me and considering our department to fill this position. It is an honor and a privilege that the school district has this level of confidence in our department. It also has been a privilege to work with the solicitors from the school district, Unity Township, and the city of Latrobe. It has been a real professional learning experience as the chief of police. I need to give council and the citizens of Latrobe a little background on what is trying to be accomplished by the institution of a school resource officer. The school district received a grant to cover costs of the resource officer for a limited time. The officer will be hired by the Latrobe Police Department as an officer and assigned to the duties of a school resource officer. There are a lot of misconceptions about the school resource officer and what they do. People say to me all the time, do we really need an armed guard in our schools? Armed guard, this is a very narrow description of a school resource officer. And usually describes a reactive officer. Yes, the officer will be armed and will possess all police powers. The officer will patrol the school grounds and building, buildings and will investigate and enforce the law. But none of these actions have to do with resource officer. The resource part is a job. The school resource officer will be a proactive officer, a mentor or role model figure. The officer will be able to speak with students privately, gain information that may lead to stopping a problem or possible tragedy or criminal actions. The school resource officer will do programs and become part of the educational curriculum and address subjects such as drug and alcohol abuse, conflict, conflict resolution, bullying, cybercrime, and cyber exploitation, just to name a few. So no, we just don't need an armed guard to patrol the halls of the schools. We need a member who blends with faculty as well as students. An individual who knows that the problems students face on a daily basis are not the problems that we faced when we were in school. We need to show our students that an authority figure should be respected, not feared, and that our authority figure can help them with problems they may be encountering. Those are just some of the benefits of a school resource officer. If the school resource officer saves one student from using drugs or alcohol, engaging in criminal activity, bullying, or being a victim, or an actor of a tragic critical incident, his or her presence at the school is well worth it. So my appeal to council and to the citizens of community is that of support for this position. I realize any thought of supplemental costs to the city is a concern of taxpayers, as well it should be. But as the chief of police, I will do my best to keep these costs to the minimum. I will also monitor this position closely with members of the school administration to make sure this is a successful venture. As the chief of police, I can promise I will utilize a school resource officer in the best way possible to educate and mentor students. I will do the best to place this officer in the best position possible to divert problems or tragedies within the school. And along with enthusiastic, an enthusiastic supportive school administration, we can make this officer work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief LeMaur.
Well said.
Anything else, chief?
I'd just like to thank, uh, council and some of the people that I see here tonight for attending the Neighborhood Watch. I think it's going to be a different program. I had a lot of fun at the meeting. I think we can, we can do this, and I think it'll work very well. I'd like to thank you again for attending.
Thank you. Fire chief's not here, and I know Ann's not here. Okay. Now to the agenda, Mr. Kelly.
Your turn.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item here is under the Administration Finance Department. It is a, an ordinance, and it's entitled to authorizing the execution of a capable franchise agreement between the city of Latrobe and Comcast of Pennsylvania LLC. Whereas pursuant to the Telecommunications Act, uh, the city is authorized to grant and renew franchises to construct, operate, and maintain a capable system utilizing public rights of way of properties within the city's jurisdiction. Whereas the city, after affording the public notice and opportunity for comment, has determined that the public interest would be served by renewing a franchise with Comcast according to the terms and conditions contained in the capable franchise agreement and a one-page side agreement, and that the process for consideration of these documents complies with all applicable federal, state, and local laws and rules and regulations. Now therefore be enacted and ordained, section one, that the co, city council does hereby approve the agreement and a one-page side agreement negotiated with Comcast, including all of the terms and conditions contained therein, and does hereby authorize the execution of such agreement and side agreement. Copy of the agreement and side agreement are attached here to as exhibits A and B respectfully. Section two, that all ordinances or resolutions inconsistent with this ordinance, the attached capable franchise agreement and side agreement, bind between the city and Comcast or hereby review. Section three, that if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or word of this ordinance, the attached capable franchise agreement, side agreement is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction. Such portion of said document shall be deemed a separate, distinct, and independent provision, and such holdings shall not render this ordinance, the franchise agreement, or side agreement invalid. Section four, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer be hereby authorized, directed, to take all actions and sign all documents necessary in order to carry into effect this ordinance and the franchise agreement and side agreement approved herein. And lastly, that the within ordinance shall take effect on the date of publication of the post-enactment notice and passage of the same enacted and ordained estate, the motion would be to enact the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to enact the ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Any discussions or questions? Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2014-24. Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Brainerd?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Those six yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item, again, under the Administration Finance Department, is a resolution, is entitled to authorizing the purchase and financing of a 2015 Mack GU 713 refuse on-off highway truck. Whereas the city of Latrobe desires to purchase the above-described truck through the CoStar Program at a purchase price of $156,262.10, and whereas, in order to purchase said vehicle, council will need to finance a substantial portion of the purchase price. Whereas the city manager has sought proposals for the financing of said truck, recommends to council to proceed to have loan documents prepared through First National Bank to finance the amount of $153,262.10 by loan secured by the vehicle in order to acquire said vehicle. Now therefore be resolved, section one. The council of the city of Latrobe authorizes and approves the purchase of the above-described truck, uh, for a price of $156,262.10, subject to lender approval and receipt of funds for financing said purchase. Section two, the city manager and city solicitor are authorized to take any and all action necessary, including the advertisement for a public meeting and enactment of an appropriate ordinance or resolution to enter into a tax-free exempt facility bond to finance, uh, arrangement of the purchase of said vehicle. Section three, the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer be and are hereby authorized, directed, to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in concert of the state, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Who'll make the motion?
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Who made the motion?
I'm sorry.
Madeline, okay. I have one question. Mr. Kelly, when you read it, you said $153,262, but it's, unless I misheard you, is it one, what's written is $156?
Well, the purchase price is $156. I understand, if I'm wrong, that we're going to put $3,000 cash in our own capital funds.
Okay, so the loan is only out of $153,000.
And the loan would be $3,000 less than the purchase price, yes.
Okay, okay.
Do you have a question?
Sure.
Joe, this truck we're replacing, we've had trouble with the frame twice now, right?
We've had trouble with the one frame. That truck will actually become our backup truck. The truck that we're actually taking out of service is a 1988 Mack. This truck would be replacing the 88.
Okay, thanks, Joe. I think one of this, um, council members' question is that, knowing that we've had some frame issues, the, the mechanics and you are really attentive to making sure that the frame that we're getting is hopefully gonna handle wear and tear of the service we're needing.
We put a lot of time and effort along with, uh, representatives from Mack concerning that issue.
Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2014-24. Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angela?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Brainerd?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Those six yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item, also under Administration Finance, is a resolution, it is entitled to authorizing the city manager to sign a whole harmless agreement for the fireworks display for the Fourth of July committee, and whereas, each year, the Latrobe Fourth of July Celebration, uh, Inc., a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, holds many events celebrating the Fourth of July, one of which is fireworks. And whereas, Lehigh Specialty Melting, Inc., permits the use of its land to conduct the fireworks display, and whereas, each year, Lehigh requests certain entities to identify and hold it harmless for any liability or damage resulting from the fireworks display. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Latrobe. Section one, the council of the city of Latrobe does hereby approve and ratify the action of the city manager in signing the whole harmless agreement for the fourth, uh, fireworks display proposed by Lehigh Specialty Melting, Inc. in the form attached here to. Section two, the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in concert of the state, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined. I might add, this is something we've done every year now, probably for the last 10 or 15 years.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second, please?
I'll second it.
Either or. Either Madeline or Tricia.
I have a question.
Any questions or discussion, yes?
Yeah, who is responsible for any liability or damage resulting?
The primary responsibility would be for the Fourth of July committee, and I'm pretty confident that they have insurance to cover these events, uh, but we also have insurance that would cover all our participation as well.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2014-25. Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Brainerd?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angela?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we are now under the police department. The first item here is a resolution, and it is entitled, authorizing entering into an agreement with the Greater Latrobe School District to provide a school resource officer/school police officer. Whereas pursuant to the provisions of the Pennsylvania School Code, the Greater Latrobe School District desires to establish a position of school resource officer/school police officer to service various schools within the district. Whereas, the district has requested that the city provide a fully-trained police officer to function in the above-described capacity. Whereas the city desires to enter into an agreement with the district whereby the city will provide a fully-trained police officer to be qualified by the district as a school resource officer/school police officer under appropriate provisions under the Pennsylvania School Code. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that the council of the city of Latrobe hereby approves and authorizes entering into an agreement, entitled agreement between the city of Latrobe and Greater Latrobe School District for a school resource officer in the form attached as exhibit A. Section two, that the individual police officer so designated to fulfill this function and, when acting within the scope of Twenty-Four Burton Statute, section 7778 of the Pennsylvania School Code, as a school resource officer/school police officer, shall at all times be in play of the school district and shall be entitled to all of the rights and benefits accrued therefrom. Section three, that the agreement set forth in exhibit A shall be conditioned upon the signing of a memorandum of understanding in the form attached here to as exhibit B, and upon approval by the Court of Common Pleas of the position of stu, uh, school resource officer/school police officer, and the appointment of an individual to set position by order of court. Section four, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, or they're designated, are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the within-described agreement and this resolution resolved in concert of the state, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll take that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, do we have to go through unity township with this and the state police or...?
That will more than likely be determined by court of law, but at the moment, my answer is no.
Any other questions?
Just to elaborate, the school district has, at their discretion, two ways to get this done. One would be with the township supervisors, and one would be, as they've done before, to have the county sheriffs provide security services during, like, for example, basketball games. They can appeal to a judge in the county here, and that's what they're going to do. That's the precedent they've done in the past. So we're simply following their lead. When Chief Boomer referenced unity township, we've worked with them and have communicated to them our understanding of the statutes, and that is the school district's past practice. And so, you know, if there's any concern that we've not vetted this with the township, we're just following the past practice that's been done before with the district and is acceptable under law, and it was brilliant.
One thing, this is somewhat different than the St. Vincent issue, and the resolution referenced 24 Burton Statute, section 7-778. And that is a provision that does permit the school district to go directly to a court and ask that a school police officer be appointed. And that person has to have training. That person would be invested with basically all the authority of a police officer if he were here in Latrobe. And that is the procedure that the district has followed on numerous occasions for other types of police officers. So we're not doing anything different than they've done in the past, except we're providing the officer at this point in time.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2014-26. Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Brayner?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Those six yes.
Madam Mayor, the next, members of council, the next item also is under the Police Department, and it's essentially a motion. It reads, "I move we authorize the city manager to advertise and take those required actions pertaining to civil service commission to hire a new police officer, and I further move we ratify any actions previously taken by the city manager or is designated with regard to the actions so authorized." That's a simple motion.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, comes under the Public Works Department, and it is also a resolution. It is entitled "authorizing approval of a broad framework for the Latrobe Municipal Authority, Latrobe Dairy Township Municipal Authority, Derry, Unity Township Municipal Authority, Unity Agreement Regarding Act 537 Update." And reads, "Whereas the Latrobe Municipal Authority and Unity Township Municipal Authority each submitted a plan to the Department of Environmental Protection relative to updates and upgrades required of the joint sewer system under Act 537. Whereas numerous meetings have occurred under the auspices of DEP in order to resolve the two conflicting plans, and whereas a broad framework for an agreement has been reached with some minor revisions to occur after review by the parties, and whereas in order to facilitate and move the process forward for resolution of the issues and entering into a consent order agreement, each party to the original sewer agreement has been requested by DEP to approve the broad framework for the outline, or for the ultimate agreement. Now therefore be resolved, section one. That the council of the City of Latrobe hereby approves in form the broad framework for the LMA-Latrobe DTMA-Derry UTMA Unity Agreement attached here to exhibit A. In section two, the mayor, city manager, city secretary, or any other proper city officer be hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary as may be required to complete the resolution of the Act 537 update through the consent order agreement resolved in council this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined. And I might add, we are approving only the broad framework. There will be a consent order agreement which will be much more detailed that we will be asked to approve in the near future. But for the moment, this is the broad framework of the resolution. And I might also add that LMA's plan was essentially, with some tweaking, was essentially the plan that was approved by DEP.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2014-27. Mrs. Caldwell-Brayner?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Those six yes.
That concludes the action items, Madam Mayor.
Any unfinished business items? Anyone? Anything for new business? At this time, we have the open forum citizen's request, if anyone would like to address council for any reason.
Dave Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. On the agreement with the school district, I know that our solicitor said that the employee would be employed by the school district. Is that correct?
It says, and it's because of some statutory requirements, while functioning as a school resource officer/school police officer. That means those times when school is in session, by statute, he must be deemed to be an employee of the district. That's a requirement. What will his benefits and pay be? We will establish that.
Well, that hasn't been established yet, then.
No, 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 I mean it has, but it's, he's our officer, and for the summer months, he will be our employee. And perhaps during the Christmas break, if you want to think of it that way, too.
You can think of it from a liability standpoint. By saying that, all their actions are, in essence, as a school employee's actions would be. Is that maybe the way to think of it? Chief Boomer, when they're there, they're acting on behalf, not of the city at that point, but as a school district employee might act.
Do we have any liability there?
We are always going to have liability for any police officer we have, whether he's taking care of a matter on Fifth Avenue or taking care of a matter at the school. Yeah, we're going to have liability issues, but over the years, I think our police have functioned very, very well in terms of liability.
There wouldn't be a whole harmless or anything like that?
I'm sure there's going to be coverage under their policy too, as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions or concerns from the citizens this evening? City managers report?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I've submitted to you a management report. I think it's a bit longer, and one of the reasons is, is it includes information of the first quarter, detailed information about expenses and revenue for the first quarter, as well as the balance of funds for the first quarter. But beyond that, there's a number of other items I would like to highlight. Something that was already referenced this evening, last Monday and Tuesday, the mayor and I were out in Harrisburg dealing with a number of legislative issues and had an opportunity to work with our state senator and state representative in various meetings, which I think will bear fruit into the future. But there's several things that are happening, a lot of detail in the management report. I really would appreciate it if council has opportunity to get through it. Give me a call and email me if you have any questions. And I also would like to request, after the time deemed appropriate, we could have an executive session to discuss personnel matters.
And under my mayor's report, I just want to echo what Alex said. We were in Harrisburg Monday and Tuesday last week for about a day and a half, and I'll tell you, it was a great experience. We were there with the Pennsylvania Municipal Lead to Cities and the Coalition for Sustainable Communities. And also, I really want to thank Senator Kim Ward and Representative Joe Patraca for spending a lot of time with us after we were done with the meetings that we were there for. We sat down with each one of them. They brought in, you know, Joe Patraca brought in DCD and different people from different groups, and we met with them and talked about some of the projects that we have in our side division and how they can help us. And it was really, really good experience, and I encourage, I told Alex, I encourage all the council members to try to take a turn at getting out there and doing a lobby day. It's really quite an experience. Do I have anything else? Oh, that's right. I have Tricia Williams say something.
If any of you can watch tonight, it was on last night about a legend in our area, Arnold Palmer. They have a nice documentary on the Golf Channel. Tonight it starts at 10:00. Tomorrow's the third part at 10:00, and they're replaying the first part Tuesday at 4:00 also. It highlights the area. It interviewed a few local people. It also has presidents just talking about how great it is.
It was very, very well done.
Do you want to cut 10:00 tonight? 10:00 tonight, if you-
On DirecTV, it's 2:18, and on Comcast, I think it's 33.
28, 33?
33.
33? Oh, yeah, 33, the Golf Channel, yeah.
If there is nothing else, then at this time, we will go into an executive session to discuss matters of personnel, and we will come back through adjournments. So if you want to wait around for us to adjourn, we'll be back.